... Board of Trustees, Mr. and Mrs. President. We have the introduction and the call.
Superintendent Daniel Gallagher.
President.
David Blackwood.
Present.
Leanne Hardy.
Here.
David Monteverde.
Present.
Jason Nelson.
Here.
Alex Flores.
Here.
Alejandro Flores.
Here.
Not present. Dela... Kiliyan English. And Melissa Myers. Now for the lunch.
So we'll go straight into the public period to discuss the 18-19 budget adoption and tax rate.
Thank you, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Gallagher. This is the 2018-19 budget... Public Budget Hearing. And our budget is based on a 10-cent tax rate increase for debt service. It's maintaining the maintenance and operation tax rate at $1.17 and increasing the debt service tax rate by 10 cents from $0.37 to $0.47. Administration will recommend a 10-cent increase in the overall tax rate from $1.54 to $1.64. This is the first tax rate increase in nine years. Last one was in 2009-10. The tax increase is due to the additional funds needed to pay the principal and interest for the sale... From the sale of the bonds approved by the voters in the 2017 bond election. Some budget facts. The 2018-19 M&amp;O proposed budget is a balanced budget. Their overall budget reflects a 6.7% increase or $4.5 million from 2017-18's initial board approved budget. Little Elm ISD's budgets to revenue. The state allocates funding based on a funding formula. This formula calculates how much state funding LEISD will receive. LEISD is a fast-growth school district and is under heavy budgetary pressures due to the adding 150, 300 new students each year. Over the past five years, LEISD's student enrollment has increased over 1,100 students. The proposed balanced budget is product of ongoing instructional need assessment and And on the revenue side, 92% of LEISD's M&amp;O revenue is generated from state funding formula and property tax collections. Two major revenue drivers is our property values that increased 21% from prior year. That's going up from $3.3 to $4 billion. The major factor in the revenue generation is the tax rate and collections. Enrollment increased 3% from 7,519 to an estimated 7,748 students. And a notation of our state funding. The effects of the state funding methodology, the summary of finance utilizes prior year's comptroller value, values to determine current year and local effort. And this has been inserted for this year's budget just to discuss the impact of the state funding formula on forecasted revenue. And this is part of the financial integrity rating system that'll be... We're bringing to the board in October, November. If the growth in taxable assessed property value slows down, it is possible for the district's net revenue to decrease from prior year. State funding formula uses prior year's comptroller taxable values for current year's local assignment. And so is, again, is LEISD's possible loss of revenue within one year from TAV growth slowdown. So basically what the template is ineffective saying is that if our growth in property value slowed down in growth from the prior year, it is possible that LEISD will receive less funds through the state because that growth slowed down. And this is just some examples of just some forecasted assumptions. If next year we... After the 18-19 for 1920, if we grow 18%, we'll gain about $1 million from year-over-year. Again, this year, we increased our property values by 21%. 16%, about $250,000. If the growth is 14% or below, Little Elm ISD could have a decrease in year-over-year revenue from a loss of $750,000 down to 10%, about $2.2 million. And again, this is the effect of the state funding mechanism. Some budget facts appropriations. 76.5% of LEISD's M&amp;O appropriations are allocated for payroll cost. And this includes a one-time 3% retention stipend that we discussed in our last workshop and that will be part of our budget for 2018-19. 77% of LEISD's M&amp;O appropriations are budgeted at the school campus level. 15% are budgeted in maintaining the schools, custodians, technology, safety, and security. Administration and support services function decreased about 1.4% from prior year, makes up about 4% of the proposed budget. The general fund debt payments, which is in the county appraisal district fees in Chapter 41 recapture to equalize wealth payments make up the other 4% of the M&amp;O budget. Then again, appropriations increased $4.5 million from 2017-18's initial budget to the 2018-19 proposed budget. And two... Almost $3 million or $2.96 million is for payroll and payroll-related costs. And this is mainly due to 3% retention stipend for staff based on the criteria discussed at the August 2018 board workshop. Administration recommended the board to approve the 3% retention stipend at the August 20th, 2018 regular board meeting. And additional stipends and quality adjustments, additional $192 per year health insurance contribution, additional 13 positions for 2018-19 school year, and the stipend list for the 2018-19 school year, which on the board is approved in prior board meetings. Other major changes and appropriations, professional contracted services increased $1.7 million from budget due to increase for contracts included in the Chapter 41 recapture, student transportation utilities. And we'll go through a list and calculate and math up the difference in the budgets from prior year. Supplies and materials budget increased about $132,000. Other operating budget increased $111,000, and that's for travel and other miscellaneous contracts. Capital outlay decreased $479,000. Chapter 41 state recapture to equalize wealth, LEISD is projecting $1.1 million in recapture to the state, an increase of $600,000 from prior year. And this is often called the Robin Hood where taxes that are collected from the LEISD tax base will be sent to the state for distribution to their... And this is a recap. Again, our additional revenue is about $4,476,000 and TRS on behalf of... This is just a book entry to reflect the contribution for TRS and it's offset by revenue and expenditures, about $295,000. 3% again on employee retention stipend, about $1.4 million. Additional health insurance contribution, $229,000. 13 new positions for 2018-19, $372,000. Additional stipend equity adjustments, $649,000. And again, the total increase in payroll budgets, close to $3 million. That leaves about $1.5 million for non-payroll appropriations. And this chart does not, you know, doesn't detail all the changes in payroll. There are other additional costs which are offset by decreases in the line items in payroll. And the non-payroll budget appropriations, again, Chapter 41 state recapture to equalize wealth, $600,000 increase. Safety and security, which is the SROs, the safety equipment, $367,000. And remember this, there are additions to prior year. Student transportation costs increased $198,000. Property casualty insurance increased $124,000. Technology, this identity software and firewall support was made up most of the $214,000. Maintenance, we have prevented maintenance initiatives to about $184,000. And the other net difference between the other lineums, about $171,000 difference. So again, the total increase in non-payroll is $1.7 million. So the major indicator, and I think you're all well-versed in this area, we talk about our major revenue, which is defined as the major revenue is the total tax collection less delinquent taxes and state revenue less Chapter 41 recapture. The major revenue makes up 90% of LEISD's M&amp;O revenue. The major revenue is less tax collections and less the Chapter 41 recapture. That's a typo that where it says state revenue. Because it boils down to our major revenue is our state revenue plus our tax collections. And then our major costs, 78.49% of LEISD's major revenue appropriations are allocated for payroll costs. And this is our historical key indicator. Again, our payroll to major revenue in 2014-15 are about 76.2% of our major revenue is allocated for payroll. We had a budgetary surplus, an actual surplus, about $1.6 million in 2014-15. You can kind of see across the line. It's about 76... 76, 75%. And the 2017-18 is still budgetary. Our 2018-19 payroll with the 3% is 79%. And if we took out the 3% retention stipend, our payroll to major revenue would be about And on the next few slides, we're going to go over the budget. And as you know, the budget is approved by funds and function, the general operating fund, the debt service fund, and the child nutrition fund. And then we make a comparison to prior year's initial budget. And the budget presentation includes estimated revenue and appropriations and disclosing the percentage change from prior year, percentage of total budget, and the dollar amount per student at each function level. And the budget is presented in millions. And comparative data, again, is compared back to the 2017-18 budget. The following funds are required to be approved by the Board of Trustees. The general fund to account for general operating proceeds and expenditures. The debt service fund to account for the payment of general long-term debt. And the child nutrition to account for resources and expenditures for LEISD's federal child nutrition program. And within these funds, appropriations are at the function level and they classify the identity, the purpose of the expenditures. Example is function 11, which is related to instruction of students. First, the general fund. Again, these amounts are in the millions. And you can see that the estimated revenue has increased from 66.5 million to $71 million, a $4.5 million increase. And appropriations matches, we passed a balanced budget in 2017-18 and I'm going to recommend a balanced budget in 2018-19 at the next board meeting. The major reasons, again, for the change from prior years is revenue increase $4.5 million mainly due to the increase in property tax collections from growing property values. And appropriations increased, again, mainly due to the majority of personnel costs from General fund revenue, the local revenue increased $8.5 million from increase in property tax collections, the local revenue. And if you can see that we went up, had an increase of 19.8%. Our state revenue decreased 18.18% or an estimated $4 million. Again, as our property values grow, you'll see that consistently throughout our forecast that as our property collections increase, our state funding contribution will decrease. Federal pretty much stays flat. And the overall revenue increased $4.5 million or 6.7% from prior year's initial estimated And we're estimating that our budget is about $71 million from 2018-19. Our sources, again, 4.5% increase state formula. This is from the state formula template, decrease $4.3 million from 18.8 million to 14.5 million. Revenue, our property tax, 42 to 50.7 million. So we're gaining $8.7 million in property tax collections. And others, we have about, I guess, $100,000 increase. And you can see that from 2017-18, our state formula is 28% of our major revenue. This year, the state decreases to 20% in tax... Property tax collections in 17-18 was 63% of our revenue, and in 18-19, it's 71%. And approximately 91% of LEISD's general fund revenue is generated from property tax and state funding formula. Now, this is the appropriations by function. Instructional has increased 5%. And you'll see on the first line, the dollars per student, that's 7,519 students. And in 2018-19, we're estimating 7,748 students. You can see instruction went from $5,263 to $5,370 per student for function, for instructional. School leadership had an increase of 3.4%. Student services, 10%. And this is all at the campus level. And you can see that our initial budget in 17-18, our appropriations were 77% appropriated to the campus. And again, in 18-19. Administrative services decreased about 1.4% from $423 per student to $405 per student. Support services increased 15%. And then community services, 26%. But it's a small dollar amount. Debt service, and this is debt service and the general fund stayed flat. This is not our debt service fund. Capital outlay decreased about 67%. And intergovernmental, this is our Chapter 41 and our county appraisal district fees increased 76% mainly due to Chapter 41, $600,000 increase in recapture. And you can see on the bottom line is that our dollars per student went from $8,365 to $9,168, or a 6.7% increase. And this is by object, our payroll, seeing that number increase 5.8%. Contracted services, 20%. Remember, transportation, utilities, and those had some big increases from prior year. Supplies and materials increased about 4, 5%. Other operating, 6.3%. Debt payments stayed flat. And then capital outlay decreased about 70%. And total appropriations, again, we went from a $66.5 million budget to a $71 million And that was our general fund. And our debt service fund. Our total revenue in our debt service fund, and again, this is from the tax collections that go... It's going from $13.7 million to $21.3 million. And this reflects a 10-cent increase in the tax rate. And our debt service payments are going up 76% from $11.9 million to $21.1 million. We have about $100,000 in budgetary surplus for 2018-19 in our debt service fund. Our 2018-19 outstanding principal debt will be $300 million. And this is about $38,773 per student. And this reflects the sale of the bonds for the $150 million and then plus $25 million. Last year, our per student cost for outstanding debt was $19,388. Child nutrition, and this is the look we do, you know, our child nutrition is federally funded, and this is the local portion of it, going from $1.5 million to $1.6 million in revenue, our state revenue, couple hundred thousand dollars in federal revenue, about Yeah, this is our total, I'm sorry, this is our total federal child nutrition program. And our current expenditures, or our per student expenditures last year was $495 and this year is $497. The free and reduced student eligibility of 2017-18 was 44%, or 3,224 children. And 18-19, it's 45% of 3,454 children. And I believe these are really earlier estimates. And this will be the budget that we'll ask you to approve at our next board meeting. The general fund, $71 million budget. The student nutrition fund, $3.8 million budget. The debt service, $21.1 million. And we'll have a total governmental budget of $95,984,000. And do you have any questions?
Yeah, Grant, I do have just one question. And it's just, basically just for my own curiosity more than anything. Way back, I guess probably around slide five or six you had on there where the amount that we would receive from taxes if we had the 20, the 18, 16, 14%?
Yes.
The increase every year. If we don't keep increasing the 20%, yes, we get smaller amount. I'm just curious, if we ever, if that ever does get down to around the 14% where we technically would lose $750,000, would we still then be... Would we still then be responsible for the recapture on top of that, Chapter 41? So would we lose?
Yes, and that's net of the Chapter 41.
Okay, so...
Yes, yeah, that'd be net, the net loss after Chapter 41.
Okay.
And it would. And I would not, not that I'm an economist or anything, but to go from 20% to 14%, that'd be a huge drop.
No, obviously, yes.
And this is a one-year drop, those examples. And what this is showing you is that there's a possibility year-over-year as our property values start slowing down in growth, that we could lose revenue. And I think it's important for the public to understand that, and that's why we do move careful on our budgeting. And also, we've discussed in the workshop, opened up the two middle schools, that that's a large undertaking for Little Elm ISD. And we're going to remain financially sound, you know, during that process. And we forecasted out, as we also discussed in the workshop, passed it. And if we forecast a 2% slowdown over the next five years, year-over-year, we're forecasting that will stay in the black. And so I don't know if that answers your question.
No, it's just, like I said, just more personal curiosity than anything because as a trustee, obviously, I want to try and keep the revenues as high, tax revenues as high as possible. As a homeowner, I'd like to see it slow down from the 20% increase every single year.
Yeah.
So it's kind of, you know, conflicted there on both sides.
Yeah, and the increase we see here also includes the new homes and new development. So it's not all the increase on your, on a home that's currently existing.
And the newer homes are on the higher end of the property scale than what we have in Little Elm. So all the new homes being built are at a higher pay rate or pay scale than what our price point than what a lot of the existing homes are. So that's where a lot of the increase is coming from. So, okay. Thank you. So the child nutrition program, it ticked up from 44% to 45%. Are we continuing to see that rate tick up? Because I know we have a lot of people who are coming into the community, a different demographic calibre. So are we still seeing that continue or...
Yeah, Jesse, can you speak to the federal...
So on the, our child nutrition population, it seems to be, from a number standpoint, it seems to be kind of plateauing.
Yep.
The trend. The percentage will fluctuate as total student body and every, you know, every year, every student group is different, one goes out, one goes in. But we seem to be the last couple of years staying in that numerical range. And whatever percentage of the population or student that is, it's, I don't think we'll have a huge, like a 4% or 5% spike one way or the other, year-over-year going forward.
And that child nutrition program, the criteria for that is set by the state or is it set by us or how is that?
Federal.
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 Federal fund.
Federal fund. The criteria is set by the federal government as well?
Yeah, and I would like to thank Jesse Wise and Beth Euler and all the work they do. I know you know their names and, of course, I stand a lot taller when they're in the room, a lot more confidence. They do a really good job in all the departments. They put a lot of time into the budgets and the budget process, and I think it goes really smoothly here. And so it's not too big of a... The struggle is making the dollar, but not as far as getting information.
All right, I'm going to ask the hard question here.
Okay.
So you get the hard question because you're a finance guy. So we're spending for stipends, if you go back to the stipends.
Yeah, the stipends for payroll.
Payroll.
Yes.
1.4 million.
Is that, I'll probably back a little bit.
Sorry, make you back.
That's okay. I'll get there.
Back it up.
Unless we can find it on one of your sheets.
Exactly.
That was in the beginning of the...
Can you start off with...
Yes, retention, oh, the retention stipend.
Yeah, so we have a couple, we have the... So we have 1.5, actually go back a little bit more.
Retention stipend, and then we have...
Yeah, there is. So we have 3% employee retention stipend. And then we have the additional stipend.
Yeah, there's additional stipends, like they'll get the coaches and a variety and you all approved the list of types of stipends back at previous board meeting. So that's what those are.
That's $2 million is what it's saying to me. It's saying 3% employee stipend plus additional stipend and equity adjustment.
Yes, yes.
So basically...
Make sure you note that some of those stipends were ones that have been increased. They were already being given, but some have been increased, like...
Right, right.
Maybe one of them was maybe the trainers.
Right.
Put it in line with... Put in in line with...
But we adjusted the increase to stipends.
Yeah, we adjusted the increase, but just know that the three percent retention stipends is one time. The actual other stipends are ones that we're looking at to put everybody on the same level.
And then additional healthcare, two point, two hundred and twenty-nine K. So basically, three, four point four seven million is additional revenue. Do we see that additional revenue coming in year over year for the next couple of years?
Yeah, I'm sorry, this, yeah, this here is actually our revenue allocated out in these different appropriations. What you're looking at is that the two million nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars is, I'm showing you how we appropriate the additional four point four million, and two point nine, almost three million dollars is going towards those payroll costs.
Okay.
Yeah.
So coming revenue twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, additional revenues, basically four point four million is what we receive in additional revenues. Do you project that because of the, when we're talking about the property taxes, the increase in property taxes, those revenues will continue to stay about that level, a little bit lower?
Well, we're projecting, right now, just modeling, and we try to look at our, our starts and, you know, how far Little Elm, Little Elm ISD is being built out. And so what we've done in the model is take it down about two percent each year, so about seventeen percent.
Okay.
I don't have the exact dollar for nineteen, twenty, what we're forecasting in additional revenue. But, but, yeah, so in the model, we go seventeen, next year fifteen, and that's just, that's all that is, is financial modeling.
Okay, so the three percent is a one-time stipend we're looking at right now?
Yes.
Okay, so potentially next year, revenues could be about three million, three and a half.
I don't have that number, yeah. But I can get that for, for nineteen, twenty, yeah.
You get twenty again, it'll be about a million more this year, and then kind of going down from there.
Yeah.
You could, I mean, it could even be more than that.
Yeah, we have a forecasting model that I could go over with, go over it with you.
We have access to last, to last week's workshop. It's all, it's all in that workshop.
Yeah, and I'll just be interested as we go into the next year in from a board standpoint of view, you know, with stipends and other stuff, just a little more in pen on what else could we be doing in the school systems? For example, you know, one of the things I always want to push for is orchestra in the school, right? But that costs money, so it runs about a million dollars. If we're seeing that we have revenue available to do it, how do we get orchestra, those sort of things inside of the school systems to continue to help our kids, right? We also talked about some of the things we want to do with revenue, and one of the things I would love to talk about, and I'll keep this off, but just how we do something like, right now, we don't, we're not doing block schedule, for example. You know, I have questions about, is that even possible for Little Elm? What does that do for us? Does that help to promote the kids' learning opportunities? So it's just things like that, as we go into the next year budgeting cycle, I would love to have opportunity to talk about it. We're going to look at four additional million dollars in revenue. The question is, is how do we get our kids from point A to point B to move us to B, you know, that school system? So anyway, I just want to bring that up, so just to give you a heads up.
One more quick question, I apologize. And again, this goes back to the recapture. At what point, I guess, what would the next tier be, and how close are we to potentially get in that next tier to have to pay more recapture?
Recap, we forecasted, it's about three more years, about three more years before we get to the next recapture.
And is there an estimate of what that is at this point in time?
We have forecasted dollar amount, and in five years, we're forecasting about twenty million dollar recapture. And if the state doesn't change its templates...
Okay, that's right, that was on last week, I apologize, yeah.
That's okay, but, yeah.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Was Plano, was Plano just sixteen years longer than three hundred?
Oh, three hundred and fifty?
Off the next, oh, yeah.
Yeah, and what, in our fork, in our board workshop, we're looking at our forecast, and we saw that each year we do net revenue according to our forecast, and then about the fourth year, we actually, our recapture will be higher than the state funding.
So if we also project out revenues for next year, and we're talking about, you know, we're opening new middle schools, we have to fund not as many teachers, we have an additional teachers, we need to fund, is there any way we also can slice away that to save up for that, that next opportunity that comes about? Because in a couple of years, right now, we don't have to have the cost, but in two years, we will have the cost, you know, so...
And actually, that's a, yeah, I was, because that's a great question.
The modeling looks at the next five years, and it includes the whole mean and additional support for the two new middle schools, and a lot of it is projections, because I'm sure what the electricity bill, utility bills, they look at, and we know what the teacher is going to cost us and everything on that. For the next two years, it's going to be difficult to model, because we're not sure that we can get a full year underneath our belt.
Yeah.
What's it going to cost us for sure to be able to run the facilities?
Right.
And then we'll come up with a better estimation after about two years.
You're going to get the CBI chart.
Yeah, I mean, I just think it gives an opportunity for us, if we have additional revenue, you know, we say a little, a little aside, where the things are a little bit more than we anticipate.
That, no, that's great. Mr. Olson, that was a great explanation, but I was going to ask Grant, do you want to add to that? But I think Jason said it well.
Yeah, Jason and David and Melissa have, we sit down with the five-year forecast nearly every month in the finance committee. And we do forecast out, we think of the programs or the facilities that we'll be adding, we put those dollar amounts in. And right now, based on the assumptions that I have in the forecast, that we will be whole for the next five years. And that's just the, again, it's, all it is is financial modeling, and then we'll come back and put the actuals in after we've experienced a year. And when they open up the two new middle schools, if everything's, of course, forecasting is some percentage wrong, yeah. So I think I, if we have a chance to go over that, I think I can answer all those questions. You'll see the forecasting model, and you'll see that we do have all the variables in it that I think that we've discussed.
Yeah, and that's the most important, is essentially, you know, we estimate the model of the variables we need to state we're going to have. You can't capture all of them, but you've got to capture a vast majority of them.
No, that's what, you know, keeping track of that, basically, granted, it's amazing how little movement in any one of those factors can really just have an exponential impact on the rate that it looks like.
You know, when, the, the one thing that causes me the most, kind of the most heartache in all this, is that table that he mentioned, where twenty percent growth is X amount, nineteen goes down. As we all know, I mean, corrections vary, almost never go down in a slope.
Yeah.
You know, they just boom, they go down from one year to the next, so that's, that's the scary part.
Yeah, well, you get to what, what worries me the most, right, is these markets are interesting the way they change, and we have, it's not a, like I say, it's not a gradual decrease, right? It's, oh, boy, look what just happened in the market, and we had a two or three percent correction somewhere, and then that trickles down into the housing market, which is where our, basically all our money revenue comes in, and the impact of the market analysis, and then we're, we're trying to figure out what's going on there.
That's why it's tough, because we do have all these other programs, orchestra, RTC, and all these things, that's like, oh, the money's there, it's like, oh, but wait, let's see, is it there?
Well, and retaining them. I mean, if we put these programs in...
Then you got to retain them.
Then you got to retain them. And where the scary part comes in is if the market changes and switches on us, and it switches two or three percent down, maybe the first year is not so bad, but if it's a two or three-year gap, then it's, you know, four percent, six percent, and then all of a sudden, now you, now it changes, right?
Well, Grant explained last week to a, the way that he does our budget.
Yeah.
To be on the safe side for something, and that if it decreases and goes down, so he, he explained it really good last week.
Just a quick, what do we account for? What kind of decreases are we counting for, just in case?
Accounting for two percent. If you're talking revenue or decrease in the budget, two percent each year.
Okay.
As far as our property growth.
Yeah.
And, you know, being at, you know, three billion dollars in values, it'd take a hard, I think, turn in the economy to drop, you know, a big percentage of that, because that's a lot of dollars, you know, real dollars.
Right.
So hopefully that doesn't happen. Hopefully, it's a gradual slowdown, and then we should be okay. And if I had to put a number to the financial risk that we have in the future, I kind of come up with about two million dollars. And we do have our fund balance, and that fund balance is, I look at as a long-term investment account for, something like that. We have our contingencies in there, and including a five percent contingency for, on our state funding. And so we do, we do what we can to protect the district of any financial hardship.
Grant, can I just jump in real quick? And that's, that is something I want to thank, Grant, the business office, Jesse, Beth, your whole team on supporting that model that you're creating. Couple of comments that daily, on when you'd mentioned, you know, if the market does, especially the housing market, if that is impacted, school districts across the area would be in a pretty tight, you know, pretty difficult issue. I'm very confident in our financial standing because of the modeling that Grant has created, because of the, just the vision he has for the district in terms of our finances. So we're fortunate here that we've, we've got a supportive board, and we've got a great CFO, so I feel very confident that we'll be in, in good shape.
Yeah, and I just think it's important for the community to understand that, you know, from a district standpoint and a board standpoint, we're thinking about, okay, best case scenario, if everything goes well, we get the programs we want to have in place, sort to support the community, but if the market decides it wants to do something that we're not familiar with and make a turn, you know, the big short takes in place, and then next thing you know, we're all trying to figure out what's going on. You know, the idea, and I appreciate Grant and the business team for that, because that's really important, saying, okay, how do we handle this?
Yeah, I think we'd all agree, and one thing is that twenty percent property value for the last three years is substantial, so we're probably on the top of that. I doubt we'll see a twenty-three, twenty-four percent off growth.
Yeah.
So if we're on the top, probably can only go down. So that's what we're trying to measure, and that's the biggest, you know, as far as a growing school district like ours, if we're kind of flat, and there wasn't a lot of new property or develop, home developments or growth in the district, it's easier to manage. And their, their risk is losing kids, our student. Ours is the slowdown in TAVs.
Yeah.
So we really try not to, we're planning it, and the three percent contingency or retention stipend, that is a one-time, that's three percent. If we didn't have it, we would bring in a surplus budget to y'all, about one point four million dollars.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much, there's no vote on that, it's just presenting, we'll vote on it next week.
Thank you.
Was there any citizen input, many times? No? All right, well, it's all that. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Adjourn at seven twelve P M.
Wait, oh, come on.
Oh, sorry, all those in favor? Any opposed?
Nope.
All right, seven twelve P M.